Do you want me to comment to that?
No.
I don't have nine o'clock yet, but I guess everybody else does. Karen, you want to lead us in the plug?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the revolted with tanks, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Uh, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda, commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
Brenda?
Um. Just a second.
Mr. Mahew, do you have any additions or corrections?
No. Well, go on, but we, um, certainly we take off then.
What do you think it?
Budget Committee.
Because?
Because I'm not done doing what I need to do. My idea for the Budget Committee.
Any, any commissioners have any objections to taking the Budget Committee off the agenda?
You don't want to talk about it, it's fine with me.
I was hoping we would talk about it.
Would you like to talk about it, Commissioner Mahew?
We're not voting on anything. Go ahead.
Okay. Public comment. Any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Appointments. Item for a Randy Booth Equalization Director. I didn't see him walk in. Okay, so we'll come back to him. Mr. Blaimer, come on up. Transit Director related to Title VI Plan update. Good morning, Ray.
Good morning, how are you?
Fantastic yourself.
What's that? Oh, I'm getting by. There again, this is just more boilerplate stuff with Mr. M.Dot. They had to revise and put some different wording into our Title VI plan. It's been approved by M.Dot, and now it just has to come to you so I get a approval from the board.
What exactly are we approving?
It's our Title VI plan.
Has there been any changes to that plan?
Well, they changed it, yeah. They, they changed subtle things to it.
Could you explain that?
I think that-
Like I said, it's boilerplate and I, there's too many changes to-
Can you summarize anything that's going to change what you're doing, what we're doing?
No, it, it basically does the same thing. It protects people from-
Discrimination, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Discrimination of any, any type of, they just, you know, M.Dot, the federal government, they just add things to us about every four years. And I have a letter here that states that it's been approved. And your program includes required elements that needs to be approved by your board. Please send me a signed copy of the Board Minutes or a resolution as soon as it's approved. This has been going on for four months, probably.
Do we do this every year, correct?
Not every year, but about every three or four.
Okay.
And next is our drug and alcohol policy.
Any questions? Oops, I'm sorry.
No, I've got to change, start working on changing that.
Any, any question, cr- oh, any questions for Mr. Blaimer?
No, no. Good. I understand.
So that means we approve it on 12th October then?
Yeah, we're gonna have to approve it at the next, we're gonna need a resolution at the next meeting.
And I did have a couple other questions, and I talked to Chairman Wiltsey about it. But I can't remember really what we decided as far as taking the 55,000 from one, from one budget line and adding it to our bus garage. It was for the security gate and the security cameras. Did we in fact approve that, or? Because I'll need to know that, and it needs to, you know, there again, I'll have to have it in writing or in the signed minutes to pursue that with the state of Michigan to get that changed.
You just need a budget line transfer, correct? Is that what you're saying? I don't remember doing that. I remember talking about it, but I don't remember.
You know, we talked about it.
But I didn't want to do anything about it, huh?
Have you touched base with Tim at all?
No. I tried, I tried to contact him last, um, last weekend, this week, and he's not responded to me, so.
He was in the office this week. He hasn't responded? Commissioner Simmons?
So this $55,000 originally for a security gate, is that what you-
It was for, um, security gate fencing and, um, security cameras.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And we've, it's been discussed at our, um, committee meeting for the transit. And basically, because we have to adhere to this, um, oh, what is it called? Is it predominant wage or prevailing wage?
Prevailing wage.
It's just gonna cost us a pile of money in prevailing wage to get this stuff done because mainly a lot of it is labor. So we feel that we can do it less expensively by doing it ourselves and putting this money to better use by paying off our, or putting it towards our poll barn.
So who's doing it? Who's doing the labor?
Well, it would be whoever we would have do it. What I'm saying is the prevailing wage takes a lot of money away from the actual buying the stuff versus putting it up. Prevailing wage.
Can I, I can help you out?
It's a lot of money for, for wages to, to do this, these projects.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
So we as a transit committee, $55,000 we feel would be a lot more beneficial to be used towards our new construction right now because we do know we had costs above and beyond what our grants were. And we, we do have an importance list of items that we still want to see done, and we have been getting some work done at the transit. And one item is a camera system, but we feel that we can get a camera system done for probably 60% savings of, of what it would cost to have a company come in, pay them prevailing wages. Lot, a lot, a lot. We can get it done a lot cheaper, and we've got the construction going in process right now for the new building, so we feel it'd be more beneficial to use that money now, eventually down the road when we get ready to put in the system for the cameras, then we just go out, we bid it, and we pay for it that way.
So right now that 55 is towards the cameras. You're asking to, to move that, I guess?
Well, I would have to ask M.Dot to move that, which is already, I've already acquired about that, and it won't be a problem. I just have to submit it. But I need proof that you, you agreed to it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And then the other thing was-
We're needed, we're gonna need to put that out for a resolution, I believe.
Yes. And the other thing is, um, the $100,000 grant, the SDP grant that you signed a couple of months ago, well, that has come back. And it is to buy a bus, but as you know, buses are 180,000 now, not 100,000. And we had discussed, um, buying another van in its place. The vans are now around 100,000. So this has also been discussed in, in prior meetings. I just don't know if we have resolved it yet. So I don't know if we're gonna have to buy a bus or are we gonna buy a van?
I thought we decided upon that. Originally you had set a van, and then I thought we went back to a bus, and there was a rationale behind it, but I don't recall what that was.
Neither.
Well, ultimately, what, what do you see for our fleet, for our rotation? What, what do you feel we need?
Well, and, and, um, I had talked to Ray Schaefer, our mechanic, about it. In fact, you and I and Ray Schaefer discussed it, and Ray thought that another van would be an asset. The van works out real well in, um, in town setting. And we do a lot of transportation in town. It also would allow me to hire someone that doesn't have a pay endorsement, but would be a good driver because they can drive that van because it doesn't transport 16 or more people. So, and it's gonna save us $80,000. And I don't really wanna spend out of our pocket on a bus. And we do have two more buses, um, the last grant that was signed about a month ago. We have two more new buses coming, so I guess it's up to you guys, you know, it's-
But it's, it's not. It's up to what you need and what we can, you can afford in your budget.
Exactly. And I don't know what we're gonna afford a year from now. We don't have this poll barn paid for yet, so that, that's a concern of mine.
Has it started?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, they've, they've got the lock cleared.
Okay. We're, we're-
Yeah, I thought you said that the grant was only good for a bus, not for a van.
Well, but I can get that changed at a, um, I'm having a meeting with the, um, Road Commission on the 23rd of this month, and at that point I can request a change.
Okay, well, that's, that's why you was getting three buses is because that's what you told us before.
Right.
I know there was a reason. I didn't recall what it was.
Well, I don't know what was that reason or not. I, I guess maybe I said I would look into it. And that's what M.Dot told me is that it would just have to be changed by the, um, Road Commission. The, um, what is it called? The Region Seven, I think, but anyway. Um, and I would have to have a special meeting, and I didn't want to go through that, but now that we are having a meeting on the 23rd of this month, I can bring it up, and there, there won't be a problem with it. They will just change it. And in the future, instead of saying a bus, it will say revenue vehicle, and then we're-
Safe.
We're, we're good with that from then on. And I believe I can get it changed. It might be too late, but at least if I have, if I have documentation from you, then I can go to the board or the, the, um, Road Commission Board and get that changed and then submit it to M.Dot, so.
So, so ultimately, Ray, and we've talked about this in our transit, uh, committee meetings, which have been very productive. You, you are the leader of the pack out there, and you guys live this every day. So what you tell us and what you guys need is what we expect is needed.
Yeah.
So when it comes to, you know, we're very fortunate, uh, fund balance wise, we are sitting good, but it doesn't mean we're just gonna go out there and buy all sorts of stuff.
Exactly.
But we need, this is a big decision, so we need to make sure we're making the right decision.
And, um, the current van that we have will be replaceable. And I believe years from now, might be three, but we can replace that with a bus. It's a revenue vehicle, so therefore we don't have to replace it with another van. We can replace it with a bus. Maybe that will be more financially secure. I just, I just don't wanna spend another 80 to 90,000 dollars out of, out of, um, our reserve when we, we don't really have to. And we can still, um, accomplish what we need, so.
You have the funds to 100% support this.
For, for the van, uh, within two or $3,000 probably. It didn't, every, every, every time you go to a, you know, six months to six months, and you go to price out a van, prices have changed. They just continue to change, so until I, until we know that that's where we're gonna order, and we put a package together, I won't know the dollar figure.
Okay, so is this gonna cost the county any money?
No, it won't cost the county any money. It'll cost the transit money.
Okay, that was, that's what I wanted to know. You have the funds to support that, the transit?
Two or $3,000, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to verify.
Yeah.
And this is what you need, so it, it go move forward with it.
Okay.
Anything else, Ray?
No.
Perfect.
No, thank you. See ya.
Thanks, Ray.
Come on up. You were late, Mr. Booth.
Wait, thanks.
All good.
We move forward.
The Commissioners Chambers.
We got Equalization Director for the 2023 apportionment report.
Yes, I believe Tim reported the apportionment report to all of you, the levy of taxes for all the municipalities and, uh, taxing authorities in the county. And, uh, there's kind of a recap page that lets you know what the total millage is in each local unit with all the taxes tallied up.
Typically, you have a hard copy for us. Do, are we getting that or no?
No, last year we kind of quit. We went to all email with Tim. We've been doing it without the hard copy. I can present hard copies for all of you next, uh, Thursday as you're meeting.
Would you? Because I take those to my townships.
Absolutely.
In case somebody wants to look at them. Questions? Does anything really stick out at you that you wanted to talk about?
No, everything's pretty much the same as it was last year. The millages, uh, you know, there's no big changes on any of the, uh, local units or in the county. Uh, there's a lot of villages, townships and county up for renewal next year, but so next year's could look a lot different. Uh, some of the local units had gypsy moth millages, and they, they did not levy those this year because the, the gypsy moth problems kind of went away for most, most of the units, so there's, uh, I think only one township that's levying the millage this year, even though they had like four years to levy the millage. Most of them quit spring this year, and so they're not, uh, levying those millages.
Questions for Randy, Commissioners? Commissioner Simmons? Mr. Mahew? Karen, did you have something?
Um, yeah, Randy, usually you put in your letter the percentage increase for the taxes. Do you not get percentages this year?
Uh, I'd have to look up. I normally do that in the equalization report in the spring based on the taxable value.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm gonna review your reports then.
Yeah.
I did have somebody ask me last night, what is, has the, what's, what, what was the question? Taxable value will increase this past year?
Uh, I'd have to look at the equalization report.
You don't have it on hand? You don't?
Yeah, that came in the spring.
I know, but I must ask him the question.
Numbers, and I could tell you, but I don't, but I'd rather look that up than give you a figure right now.
Yeah, can you let me know?
Yes.
I got one thing, Ken.
Go ahead.
Uh, so this is bigger than just for talking with Randy about it, but Randy's, you know, more of in his wheelhouse. So one thing that I have really major concerns about is, again, like what Randy was saying, we have all these millages that are gonna be coming up here in the near future. I know, for example, Breck's trying to get information on school millaging, and she's having hard, hard time getting information that we need on that. Would it be wise for us to try to get all of these entities together to have a strategy meeting to say, okay, well, it's gonna make the most sense, you know? Because like also I'm on the EMS board, and the EMS definitely is gonna wanna go for a millage, you know? Transit, I'm chairman on that board, and they want, we're gonna go for a millage. I think it'd be smart, we get all these entities together face to face, and we start talking strategy of what's gonna be best.
We need to.
That's just kind of more of a-
That was my plan. That was my plan after I got my information.
I don't think that that's gonna be necessarily a bad idea. Just be very cautious, because as far as combining, and, and lots of people have different opinions and, and feel very strongly about certain things. We hate to do accommodation and, and, uh, many things fail, or, or it'd be great if they pass, and hopefully they do, but just be very cautious with that.
I, I guess I understand what you mean.
Uh, just be cautious. Um, there, there, it is an excellent point. There is gonna be a lot of things that are expiring that are gonna be coming up, and you just gotta be cautious for voter exhaustion.
That's what I think is-
And people are, I don't disagree with that. I just, like I said, but I, I just be cautious.
I will reach out to everybody and get something going.
Yeah, we talked to Tim on Monday, and we just talked our-
Anything else for, for Randy related to the apportionment report? And then you have the headly override.
Okay.
I see that on our iPads. Would you like to touch base with that?
Touch base with it. Charles asked me to come, and, uh, uh, you have any questions or information about the headly override? Tim had told me he had provided some information to you. I know Mac had a pretty good, uh, publication out about the headly override and, uh, and the reasons, uh, you know, why some of the communities are having to try for them and the revenue analysis, uh. You know, the headly, headly adjustments were put in in 1970s and throughout the 80s. It worked well. Uh, but with proposal A, the revenues have been capped at the rate of inflation ever since, and so you're getting, if your assessed values are going up at a, at a pretty high rate, you're getting rolled back on what you can levy. But then conversely, you're being capped on taxes you can levy as well because the taxable values aren't increasing. And so a lot of, you know, Ogumaw County's not unique in that they're struggling financially because of the headly restraints. You know, it's, you're, right now you're at 6.0931 for an operating millage that you can levy, and the voters approved in 1965, 7.2 mills. Uh, so you're, you know, that, that, an additional mill of revenue is significant amount of, you know, 1, 1.1 mills. You're looking at 1.1 million dollars annually in tax revenue that you've lost because of the headly rollbacks.
Who, um, can I ask Randy a question?
Go ahead.
Randy, thanks for the information that you provided for us. And in your email, you said after the DGA recaptures in our first year, uh, we would generate almost 1.1 million dollars, and then the following year, 3% to 5%.
Yeah, based on the rate of inflation, however it's capped. Uh, last year was the first year that we saw a 5% increase, uh. And there's so many things that depend, and it's based on a new construction and just the inflated values of properties, how many properties transfer, and the uncapping and whatnot. So it's hard to predict out what the percentage adjustment would be. Uh, I've been here since 2017, and we've been averaging, it started out at about one and a half, 2%, and went to three and four, and like say last year was more like 5%. So it's, is the values of the properties have gone up, the, the percentage of increase has been higher the last few years. But the CPI, the rate of inflation was 7.9%, so your, your revenue has not even been close to the rate of inflation.
So you're obviously very intelligent in this, in this area, and we have spoken a little bit. If we would come to a decision to, to try to go after this, we realize it, it takes a lot of work. We have to be very consistent with our message. Uh, we'd have to really show the people, okay, well, if we're gonna generate this money, what is this money gonna be used for? But would you be willing to, to help, help us with that?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Comments?
Or Scott? What's our next, what's the window for the next election? November, what?
21st. 21st, yeah.
21st, and then that's for the February?
7th.
We have to have it in by November 21st?
I don't, yes. I don't need the wording though until December.
Okay.
Anything else?
How many elections are there next year then?
Hmm, probably four.
Does that include the school election?
But I don't have 100% confirmation on that yet. I was just told maybe.
Should we have, right?
February, May, August, November. And it's generally three months before the deadline, is three months before if something's gonna be filed, yeah. But I, I only have the February calendar as of right now. That's all that the Bureau has put out so far. So as soon as I get a calendar on the remaining year, or the remaining elections of the year, I'll, I'll get it out to you guys, so you can have that information.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Randy.
Discussion items, a medical benefit contribution limit for calendar year 2024. Seeing there was some information on our iPads. Do you know who's taken the, anybody wanna give further explanation on this? Karen, do you have any information on this? You guys had an opportunity to look this over?
I read it over, but I-
We're, we're at, we're currently, and our contracts are at hard caps right now. And, uh, I think we oughta probably stay there.
I guess, what's employees' input on this? I- Has it been-
We went to AD 20 a couple of years ago, and they didn't like that one bit, so.
One of your contracts has it written right into your-
Yes.
contractual agreement that what they have.
Uh, uh, yeah, for, for the remaining period of time.
I guess, do we know why this is on here? Has anything been communicated?
Not to myself.
Well, it's, it's an idea of saving money, I thought.
Tracy, do you have any input or no?
Is she on here?
Yeah.
Tracy?
Um, so this is to do with the hard cap, and I believe you would just adopt this resolution every year, saying that you're gonna use the hard caps for the next fiscal, or calendar year.
How much money, Tracy, will this save us?
This doesn't really save us money. Um, this is just more or less saying that the employees don't have to pay 20% of, of their medical. The hard cap is what the state puts out, saying that that's the most that, uh, we can pay for their insurance. So it doesn't really save us money when we start using the HSA money. It's just saying that the employees do not have to pay for their 20% of their medical insurance.
Do you know why this is on here? Is this, is this something we have to approve every year?
I believe you do just approve it every year, saying that you adopt the state of Michigan's hard cap amounts. I, I see in here where it says whereas, they have the three options that you can do, and then the next one is just saying you're going to use the hard cap. So this is more or less the resolution that just says you're gonna, for 2024, you're gonna use the hard cap amounts.
With us being in a contract, there's nothing, is there anything else that, that can be done?
I, I believe that's why this resolution is just in place, saying you're taking the hard caps because the union contract says you use the hard caps while that contract is in place, so.
I guess that was my question. With us being in union contracts, is there anything else that we could do to help save money? Without costing?
There's probably ways, but regard, if you use the hard caps, you're just more or less saying that the employees aren't paying the 20%. You're using the hard cap numbers. There's probably ways we could look at saving a little bit of money later, but like a single person, they're under the hard cap, so you're saving money. I mean, you're not giving them the full amount of the hard cap. I think families also fall under the hard cap. But it's always the two person that, um, is over the hard cap. They're the ones that always have to pay. And I believe the Teamsters insurance is always over the hard cap. They always pay the Teamster court insurance. If you get the Teamster insurance, they are always over the hard cap. So they do pay out of their paycheck quite a bit already.
So there's no change on this resolution that's presented?
It's not really, it's not really a change. It's just adopting the 2024 Michigan hard cap.
Okay. Questions on this, guys?
No questions.
Well, I believe that we can go to 80/20 if we decide to. Uh, other than one contract that keeps us from doing that. So that would, that would say that the employee would pay 20% of the, of the cost.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else to that?
I don't know dollar amounts, what, what savings are be.
Even though we're in the middle of the contract, we're not back up for negotiations. Do you think that can happen?
Yes.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Simmons?
Mesa Plan was able to put us under the hard caps, just like Tracy just said, with, uh, with the single coverage. And, uh, it was still the Teamsters Court employees wanted to stay with the, with the Teamsters insurance. And so that was the only, the only union that didn't, the only contract that, that stayed with the Teamster insurance rather than Mesa. Even though they paid out, they pay out quite a bit of a deductible or copay.
Tracy, is there a deadline to this? Does this have to be put on for next week, or can we put this on? Obviously, there's more questions to be had on this. Can we put this on the committee of the whole for two weeks?
I would think that this doesn't go into effect until January 1st, so I would think you can wait. It doesn't have to be decided next week.
Healthcare plans follow the calendar year.
Unless, yeah, the health player's calendar year, unless it has something to do with your budget part of it, so. Which the budget's already adopted. I would think that you can discuss it again next time.
Okay, I'd like to put this on for two weeks from now. Item 5B, Budget Committee. There is a memorandum on our iPads. Did everybody get an opportunity to look at this?
Definitely.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have? It's on, it's the very last thing on our iPads. Did you have something you wanted to add to this? It looks like they're trying to file the transit committee model.
I wanna wait on, and I haven't, um, came up with the idea. I haven't, I haven't finished, um, the work I wanna do on this first, yet. I wanna wait. I don't wanna do anything with it now.
According to this, okay, according to this, it's looking for five to seven total members, um. Two Commissioners, um, the Commissioner assigned as Chairperson of the Claims and Accounts Committee, could serve as a Chairperson- The commissioner assigned as chairperson of the claims and account, accounts committee, conserves the chairperson budget committee, the treasurer, the courts, the sheriff. Equalization director, uh, committee members should be manageable, perhaps five to seven members. Pardon me?
I'm, I'm not done. I don't agree with, I don't agree with that. Those people should be there, but. There's more to it than what's on this little memorandum, believe me.
I think it'd be a good idea to have a, a one or two. Oh, I think it'd be a good idea to have one or two, uh, uh, community members as well.
I don't see a problem with that, but I, I, I have not done. I have not finished doing. What I want to do, I propose the, the budget committee. And I have not finished my legwork yet.
So can you give us a timeframe of when you, do you think on the next committee of the whole? You'll have some more legwork done?
Yes, probably so, next committee is all, not, not now.
Okay, Commissioner Scott, did you have something?
No, no, no.
Commissioner Wilkett, Lucy?
Yes, I don't have much of a part of it.
I think it was a really good idea to go kind of on the model, the transit committee, that's a new committee. Again, I'm the chairman for it, but I think it's a really good model. I think some of the people on here. Are definitely should be on there, I mean, some of our larger budgets. I do like the idea of also the possibility of a. Couple outside, uh, residents that, uh, are very involved with the county. I guess, uh, I, like I said last week. I'd like to see this come together sooner than later. I want to do it right, but I definitely think we need to. Stake horse and keep the throttle down and, and get this going, so.
Commissioner Simmons?
We want to do it right, then we don't want to rush into it and I'm not done doing what I need to do.
So do you think within, again, and we'll put this on the next committee of the whole, two weeks from now, you'll have more information?
It's a good possibility, yeah.
Okay. So we'll put that on for next, next. Next time, item five C retirement incentive proposal, I believe this is you gentlemen back there? Come on up. I didn't see any numbers on here, did I miss them?
Well.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Our timeline for Commissioner Simmons. We're developing an idea, a foundation for county retirement incentive. To present to you with numbers. Given the unfortunate circumstances with our county administrator. We, we're confident in the numbers that we're seeing. As far as this idea that we're building upon, but until we actually sit down with the county controller. Make sure that those numbers work. And are saving money and doing what they're supposed to. We're just not ready to discuss the meat and potatoes of it. So the timeline with what's going on, we anticipate Monday or Tuesday next week. We'll be able to have that sit down. See if this post is valid. We're still confident it is, but until we actually sit down and compare. And then my hope is, is that by Tuesday at the latest, you'll have hard copies of what this proposal is, the breakdowns of the costs and everything like that. Be able to ask questions and we can look at it on Thursday. If, if it is valid, i- if we come back Monday, Tuesday and it's not doing what we think it's going to do, then you might not even see it. But the scope of it and how deep it goes won't really be known until we sit down with the county controller. Make sure that what we're seeing is in fact. The reality of it and get it in front of you for your decision-making process.
Your numbers are looking good though, so hopefully some of these jobs can be saved.
We feel confident in the numbers that we're saying, so we're seeing, I say, um. We feel pretty confident, but again, we don't want to start. Make an error of what we're telling you right now with the numbers that we have until we actually sit down and. And hammer out, see what the final proposal is going to be. What the realistic numbers are. Both sides and that will make an informed decision.
And we're waiting to hear back from Mesa too, correct?
Uh, it's actually MERS, MERS is.
I'm sorry.
Is what the retirement incentive MERS will be involved. Um, there's a couple of things that we have to look at and. Make sure those ducks are in a row too, so.
Well, we appreciate the effort. Um, you guys have reached out several times this week and. It, I mean, you're, you're, you're attending, so that is appreciated.
Well, we're hoping that we're going to be able to have more. In-depth conversation today, but with the unfortunate circumstances, we'll, we'll push it on the first to next week. I guess that my hope is by Tuesday you'll have. A proposal in front of you that you can start looking at it, diving into asking questions and. We can get to Thursday maybe and start moving forward and so.
Any other ideas?
Still working on them.
Come on.
We're talking people every day, you know, as far as other. Municipalities and jails and, you know, we're. There's a house bill that's caught our attention and we'll, I don't know if that's been disseminated to you or not. Tim brought that back from a math conference, um. That should be interesting, but we still got to do some more exploring on that. Uh, I checked into a little bit yesterday. It's through the first reading. Uh, and the nuts and bolts of it, I don't have a good working knowledge, but it ties into the millages for. Law enforcement, first responders EMS, uh, I talked to Justin yesterday. Got him working on it, city halls working on it, so. Something could come of that down the road, so we're going to watch that very closely. Basically, it's a match from the state for village money for most certain. Services, services, you know.
I've not heard of that.
They just add to that, so that's from this past Mondays. Uh, meeting that Tim was at, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just, this is all new news.
This is all new, new stuff that came from Mac. He had a little bit of time to look into it and then I looked it up myself and started disseminating a little bit, but it's through first reading and basically it's. There's a match of money coming from the state if you qualify as a county for those particular services, so. We're going to watch it closely, we're going to. Potentially start talking to our reps in the House and Senate. Move this thing forward, so that's another thing that's, again, it's in the early stages. Out of our control, but.
That'd be great, I just wonder where they're going to get the funds.
Well, it makes you wonder where, but I mean, if they're going to put that program out, the timelines were. Submit in December, March, they put the list together and it says written in the bill that I read yesterday, July first would be when funds would be put out, so. That has to do with taxable value, again, great conversation, Randy. But again, it's in the early stages, it's only first reading. So I don't know. We'll just keep pushing. Definitely we'll talk about EMS because they're included, so.
So possibly this upcoming Thursday, you'll have more information, or, yeah, a week from today.
That is my tentative plan, that Monday or Tuesday we'll have. The knowledge to move forward, we'll do it by Thursday, we can have a final discussion. Push through.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for the gentlemen?
Yeah, I have, is there a deadline on this?
Deadline on.
We have no, till November first.
Do what?
November first.
Oh, well, I understand that. So. So we're just going to, uh, I don't like the idea of just. Looking at and passing it without. Some background information.
That's what they're waiting to get, the final numbers, in, until we have some finalization. So waiting to hear back from, uh, Tim and from MERS and to make sure it's something that can even be done.
You won't be passing it by, the, the objective is Monday or Tuesday. If what we're seeing is correct, you're going to get that in front of you to start analyzing. Asking questions about. We can have another discussion on Thursday and. My hope is that we'll get enough work done that you'll understand it, it makes sense. We feel it's going to work, but. We won't know until Monday or Tuesday when we actually have stuff to present to you.
Yeah.
They reached, they reached out to each one of us, I, I, I believe, and, and wanted to sit down, but we didn't have numbers, they didn't have solid numbers yet. I know they said they talked to the law enforcement committee. They talked to me, they talked to you.
To have. Joint meeting and I ended up.
I did, because when, when you talked to me, I said, well.
Yeah.
You know, I want the chairman involved in this.
Which we will until, but not until we have numbers that are solid numbers. I didn't feel it was necessary.
I didn't have any discussion with it.
Yeah, and that's, I wanted. That was fine and with the chair's schedule this week.
What was my wording?
The three of us. But the foundation is there, I think you understand the foundation, what we're looking at, that we just have to get you the numbers so that. We can make an informed decision and move forward, but we are hopeful it's going to change. The dynamics of what's currently going on.
If, if you get numbers between now and Thursday.
I want them real numbers, no, not just so.
We understand. That's why we're waiting. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Yep.
Thanks for the work. Item six, public comment. Any public comment in the room? Come on up, sir.
Price and Kovey, I'm an officer for the Overma County Correction Facility. Um, this was going to be a lot longer, but after speaking with the undersheriff, I felt I should probably cut it down a little bit. Smith has a statement to inform the department heads and elected officials of the possible risks involved with the proposed layoffs. Which I guess under proposed. Uh, I feel these layoffs are a little more than a Band-Aid on a gave wound. I don't know if they're going to solve any issues long term. The financial burden. That may be put on the county with these layoffs. First, the financial burden that may be put on the county. With these layoffs, the county hopes to save enough money to balance the budget, that's clear. One issue that crops up would be the overtime created by the cuts in the jail alone. I don't know how the deputies are going to handle being shorthanded, the jail, however. It's going to create overtime every single time an officer is off duty, vacation, sick time. Injury bereavement. It's also going to be created every time that transport is required. Court inmate pickup, drop off, doctor's visits, emergency room visits, where you have transport. Another financial issue would be unemployment. Though some may be able to or choose to find employment immediately. Others may take the full term in the hopes of being called back. They may take the full term despite you feeling wrong by how this was handled. Others still may take the full term to work on themselves. Make themselves more employable through school, training, etc. Officer inmate safety and security of the facility is a concern. Fact that we had to jail, be on bare minimum staff, opens the door for all manner of risks, not just for us, either for the inmates as well. For instance, if there's a violent altercation between inmates and officers. Either both parties end up substantially injured with a lead hospital lawsuit. And life-altering injuries for officers or inmates. In closing, some of our officers need the medical benefits that are offered. Some of our officers need to pay. And there are officers that love this position, have a sense of pride, being able to serve their community. Must be taken from them with these layoffs. Feel that we all need to come together and truly take a hard look at all our options. All the department heads and elected officials should be coming forward, possible solutions. This isn't optimal for anyone, with the jail on the road, take the brunt of these cuts, our entire county is going to suffer greatly. Should also be stated. That it was ego and arrogance. That cost this county the opportunity to house inmates for Calhaskan and Gladwin. Housing that could have made the difference. Housing that could have paid for the raises that were given. While our lives are literally under the affect.
Thank you, sir.
I have one.
No. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Hello, Julie Darden, MSU Extension District Director and proud 4H volunteer. This is National 4H Week, um, so I thought I would highlight, um, some recent, uh. Uh, acknowledgement of volunteers from Overma County. On September thirtieth, the Michigan 4H Legacy Awards Celebration was held in East Lansing. And two volunteers from Overma County were honored, um, because of the pandemic. The, there hasn't been an, a ceremony to honor volunteers for the last few years. So, um, recipients Andrew Walker and Vicky Rao were recognized at this, um, awards, um, event. Um, Vicky Rao has been a volunteer in Overma County for the last twenty-four years. And Andrew has been a volunteer here for fourteen years, um, and Vicky wasn't able to be, uh, at the event. But, um, this is the award that was, that it will be presented to Vicky, um, to recognize her work, sorry, I'll turn it around. Um, and this is an award that's offered in conjunction between Michigan 4H. As well as Michigan Farm Bureau. It just recognizes, um, the contributions that 4H leaders, uh, bring to our communities. Um, with their dedication to youth, um, and so, uh, I wanted to encourage all of you to, uh, help us celebrate, uh, Michigan. Or National, uh, 4H, uh, Week. Uh, the theme of National 4H Week is I Love 4H, so, um, where you may see a lot more social media. Um, yesterday, uh, 4H at the Capitol occurred where 4H members and volunteers went to the Capitol and. Um, and, uh, had tables available to meet with legislators, uh, to share information about what 4H does. It's an organization that's existed for over a hundred years, uh, across, uh, the nation. Um, and, um, we're certainly proud of the way that it encourages youth to be involved in leadership. Um, and adults to have a meaningful presence in, uh, the lives of youth in our community. So thank you so much for, um, allowing me this time to share with you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Jenny, it's Tracy again.
What Tracy?
Probably what should comment that you should probably discuss your hard cap thing only because open enrollment is coming up. And if you guys are going to do anything different, the Mesa, you know, plans might, they may decide to. Change their plans a little bit, so. You might want to at least put it on for next week and have Tim explain a little bit more if you know, want explanation, but I wouldn't take it off completely. Just because we're getting into a time, you know, crunch with open enrollment.
What's the dates for open enrollment? What's a?
The date that we have oh, for open enrollment is November thirteenth through the December first. But we have to have the plans chosen and selected before that can happen. So I would say like by early November. Mesa is going to need to know what plans they chose. And right now, I think we're going to try to roll over the existing plans with no changes. Because they were still close to the hard cap or under. But if you guys change, you know, decide to do something different, the healthcare coalition may decide to, you know, change plans to try to get under the hard cap. Or, or whatever you're going to decide, so. Or the eighty twenty, so, but with one bar, one, I don't think you can split. I have this public act here that says. You can't offer one bargaining unit, one thing and the other bargaining unit, another thing. So I believe the Teamster Court right now, the you, the, you'd have to open that contract up and change that as well. So you may have a little bit of a time crunch. I would just say, I would leave it on the agenda for next, next week and have Tim maybe explain it more.
Okay, we put on our discussion items on the meeting for next week. Okay, thanks Tracy.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on the phone? Um, anything else, commissioners, motion to adjourn?
I just got one thing.
What?
I need you guys all flyer, everyone's here on Zoom as well, uh, EDC, we have two workshops. First one tonight is for, uh, social media, we have some really good speakers. How to use social media effectively for your business and then next Thursday. But, uh, another meeting with some, some also really strong speakers on, uh. Regards to how to use collaboration amongst businesses to outgrow, grow your business. These are of course free workshops, um, they're at the Michigan Works Building. Tonight and next Thursday from six to eight o'clock, so if you guys know anybody that's in business, wants, thinking about being in business. It'd be a great opportunity for them to come tonight and next week. That's all I got.
Thanks. Any other? Anything else, commissioners? Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We're going to adjourn at nine forty-eight.